Okay, let's come to order. We're here for a special call meeting about our building program. Jeff, was there a visitor? Okay, well, let's move on then.
Yeah, obviously, we're here to talk about Stewart Creek High School and the awarding of the bid. And there's a history that I think the board would benefit from. And Jeff, do you want to kind of take it away?
Yeah, as the board will recall, at the time that Stewart Creek High School bids were opened, there were some issues with respect to Hardaway Construction's bid in the sense that the Mason subcontractor, who Hardaway had quoted on their bid envelope, had an expired license. At that time, as the board recalls, we had checked, actually, to see, make sure to confirm that was not a typographical error. It wasn't an error from the website from the state of Tennessee. And indeed, at that point, the Board of Licensing Contractors, who governs contractors, confirmed that indeed, the Mason subcontractor, which Hardaway Construction had listed in their bid, had indeed had an expired license. So by virtue of that, the board, this board, went with the second lowest bidder on the project, being Biskin Construction, and awarded the bid to Biskin for the new high school project. After the board's action that time, a complaint, or some sort of action, was filed with the Board of Licensing Contractors for the state of Tennessee. And the Board of Licensing Contractors is a governmental body of the state of Tennessee that governs contractors. They don't really govern boards of education. They don't govern other agencies, but they are in charge. They're the people who are in charge of issuing licenses for contractors, whether it be Masons, electricians, general contractors, and so forth. And that's what the purview of that agency is for. So the Board of Licensing Contractors has disciplinary authority over the contractors who are licensed in the state of Tennessee and jurisdiction over all contractors. But the Board of Licensing Contractors took up the issue after the Stewart Creek bid was opened and awarded to Biskin. It took up the issue as to whether or not Biskin's bid was valid. And apparently, there was a complaint lodged that Biskin had not fully named the Mason subcontractor on their bids in accordance with the state law and rules and regulations of the state contracting board. And specifically, the specific complaint was that Biskin Construction had utilized the name Music City Masonry. So the Mason that was shown on the bid envelope for Biskin was Music City Masonry. And that was the source of the problem, according to the complaint. Because according to the complaint, the full legal name for that particular Mason is George Construction Company, LLC, DBA, Music City's True Line Masonry. So the true legal name is much longer for that particular Mason than what was shown on the bid envelope for Biskin. And in fact, for many of the other bidders that day, they all just generally said Music City Masonry. But based on that discrepancy, the Board of Licensing Contractors, on July 28th, 2000, well, in a hearing on July 26th, and by letter they issued on July 28th, 2011, the Board of Licensing Contractors found that both Hardaway's bid and Biskin's bid did not comply with the rules and regs of the licensing board with respect to contractors, and therefore, really, from the contractor's standpoint, should not be considered because they do not comply with the technical requirements of the rules and regs for the Board of Licensing Contractors. And in this letter, the Board of Licensing Contractors recommends for the Board of Education to rebid the project. And that's the recommendation that the Board of Licensing Contractors had for the Board of Education. Now, the Board of Education is not governed by the Board of Licensing Contractors. And in fact, the Board of Licensing Contractors has no jurisdiction over the Board of Education. But the Board of Licensing Contractors does have jurisdiction over Biskin and Hardaway and all other contractors. So they potentially could take action against one of the contractors should they choose to do so. As a result of a complaint, if a complaint later on got formally filed against either one in regards to this project. So the Board of Education, so we, as the Board of Education, here find ourselves tonight in a position of what we want to do with respect to this letter that the Board of Licensing Contractors has issued. The board, as you were, as we mentioned, did vote to award the bid to Biskin. We have not, the board has not yet signed a contract with Biskin, and we were delaying the execution of that contract because we had heard that this complaint procedure was working its way through the Board of Licensing Contractors. So the contract's not yet been signed with Biskin. But, so it basically falls upon the board at this point to determine what, if anything, the board wants to do about it. You're not required to do anything about it. You can choose to do nothing if you choose to. But the contract's not yet been signed with Biskin, and you're getting a recommendation from the Board of Licensing Contractors, who regulates contractors, that you should rebid the project. Now, I'm sure there was a letter by Biskin's attorney that was generated today that went to the Board of Licensing Contractors whereby the attorney for Biskin requested the Board of Licensing Contractors to actually rescind the earlier letter they issued last week. And I did contact the attorney for the Board for Licensing Contractors late this afternoon just to see what, if any, action was contemplated as a result of the letter that was sent by Biskin's attorney. And the attorney for the Board of Licensing Contractors could not confirm any action was going to be taken one way or the other. There was just no action pending on it at this point, one way or the other, with respect to the request to rescind last week's letter saying that we should rebid the project. So obviously, it's rather, seems to be somewhat of a technicality with respect to the challenge to Biskin's bid, with respect to the full name not being listed. But certainly, in this case, there's no one pointing any fingers at the board, saying the board has done anything wrong, one way or the other, in regards to handling the matter. It's just a situation where you've got two contractors fighting over the project. So they're both are doing what they can to try to secure this project. And because these are very lucrative contracts in this economic time, and everyone wants the job. So I guess the board finds itself in a position now of deciding whether it wants to do anything in response to the findings of the Board for Licensing Contractors. And like, yeah, you don't have to do anything. If you don't do anything, you can proceed on, execute the award to Biskin. Or if you do decide to do anything different, since rebidding the project, that's another option you can take up tonight as well.
Harry, let's get your recommendation, and then we'll have questions and discussion.
My recommendation is to rescind the awarding of the bid and to rebid.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
Do you agree with that recommendation, Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I mean, I think you're entitled to do that, yes, based on the Board of Licensing Contractors' ruling, because they're saying that you should rebid.
Go ahead, Aaron, and I'll go down.
Well, we thought, in our discussion, maybe it's the safest way, you know. And I hate it, because I agree with, your assessment was pretty good. Basically, a minor technicality is what excluded Biskin pursuant to this board. But, you know, we can go out for bid, and three weeks from now, maybe reopen bids. And in the interim, if there are some kind of challenges by Biskin against that board, what, Jeff? I mean, we could go back and revisit the issue if they say that they were wrong in making that judgment. So we just think this is the safest way to travel. You agree?
Terry.
I think Mr. Gill just answered. I was just interested how far this is going to throw us behind.
We've had a discussion. Gary, this party says there's no question we can get it finished on time.
Okay, Grant.
Are there any risks, though, that us doing this, that we would be challenged from? And that would tie up this. I mean, I guess maybe I need...
There's always risk, whichever way you go with this matter. So you've got two contractors fighting over the same project. So you can't award the project to two different people. So you're always at risk of some exposure.
Or someone could file an action, a legal action, then that would delay our possibility of getting this thing done on time and matter.
It could happen, yes.
Yeah, that's a key point. I mean, I hope, I mean, we've done a lot of work with Biskin. They've done good work. And I'm sure Hardaway would do good work. But bottom line is, we've got to have 2,000, 1,800 kids put into school here in two years. Otherwise, we'll be out buying portables, and hopefully, cooler heads will prevail on this. And, you know, they can work through this. But we need to, we need to get something reconciled at this level.
Yeah, I know we're a little bit out of order. I know Don Smith, who is here, the attorney for Biskin, he arrived late. He was planning on speaking to the board tonight on behalf of Biskin. I'm not sure if the board wants to take him up now. I told him he would have a three-minute, right, for a presentation, but it's up to the board.
Right. I did call for that earlier. But what's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to hear from Mr. Smith?
I think I'm speaking.
Is there any objection to hearing objection? Mr. Smith, welcome.
I'm really embarrassed, and I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I've been down here several times before, but I just got lost, and I'm very, very sorry.
Well, traffic is a little bit crazy around here this time of day.
My name's Don Smith. I'm a practicing lawyer in Nashville. I represent Biskin, and I represent the subcontractor, Music City Masonry. Biskin's bid is under consideration. I believe, I've written a letter. I hope you all have seen my letter contesting the right of the licensing board to even write a letter to you quoting what the law is regarding a license. That was an error. We would respectfully submit, if it ever gets to that, we will contest that. Now, we were never giving, there are a few things, let me, because I don't want to take too much time. The licensing law, the purpose of the provision regarding listing bidders on the envelope, here specifically, the masonry, is in order to stop bid shopping. Contractors, prior to enactment of that, general contractors would use somebody's bid. Then they would get the contract, and then try to shop with them and get their price down, or go to somebody else. So by statute, in Tennessee, we changed that to say you could no longer bid shop. Whoever you listed would be the contractor who is on the envelope. Now, Music City Masonry was on the envelope, and their proper license number was on the envelope. At worst, there would be a typographical error or an administrative error. They operate under the name of Music City Masonry. It's so-and-so doing business is Music City Industry. The other companies are all owned by the same person, and it would be like Chevrolet bidding and its name, rather than Chevrolet, a general division of General Motors, et cetera. The bid is perfectly proper. The next problem with the letter from Carolyn Lason, the licensing board, is we have never received, meaning Biskin or the subcontractor has never received any complaint or any formal notice that anybody was contesting our bid. The statute specifically provides that they've got to give us notice if there's any contest to our bid. They never did that. The first thing we heard was a telephone conversation, and then received a copy of the letter that you received saying that the licensing law had been violated, or something to that effect. The third thing that I want to point out is, we have an opportunity to respond to any complaint. There's never been a complaint. And we have an opportunity, I believe it to be unconstitutional, to do what the licensing board's trying to do. But notwithstanding, or not regarding that, they admit we have an opportunity to defend that. And we will defend that. The licensing board has no jurisdiction under any case law or statute that I'm aware of, and I don't believe your legal counsel will advise you differently, that says the licensing board has jurisdiction to even hear this, or certainly not to order the Rutherford County School Board to order them not to enter into the contract with us, meaning Biskin and its subcontractor. Before I sit down, I want to say two more things. One of them I want to reemphasize. All this is doing is penalizing an innocent subcontractor. That's all it does. It penalizes Biskin. But it also simply penalizes an innocent subcontractor whose working name was on the envelope and whose correct enforced license number is on the envelope. There is nothing deficient about the bid. We would respect, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm trying to limit this unless you do have questions. You are lawfully entitled to issue this bid to Biskin as being the low bidder after the improper bid. Nobody's ever disputed that the low bid was, should be thrown out. That you can issue this bid to Biskin. You face no liability. You have no reason not to. Any action by the Board of Licensing, by law, would have to come against Biskin and/or the subcontractor. Even as I stand here today, and everybody knows, been in the newspaper, we still don't have a complaint against Biskin from the licensing board. So they were simply, we would respectfully submit this was done in haste before an opportunity to consider it was even heard. And we feel like, and I would respectfully request, that you go ahead and enter into the contract with Biskin. I'd be happy to answer any questions, because I didn't want to, I don't want to pass up anything. And I'm out of breath from my frustration with myself.
Grant, and then Harry.
Do you think anyone else would challenge you, of the other contractors, or?
No, I don't think anybody could.
They don't have any legal right to challenge you?
There's no basis to challenge. There's no legal basis to challenge. The board has no legal basis to challenge. The board, if they think we're doing something wrong, a complaint could become, be stated with the board. Then the board should hear it. And then, if they think we did anything wrong, then we'll be penalized, not Rutherford County. That's what the Board of Licensing is for.
Mr. Gill.
You kind of touched on my question. But supposing we went ahead and awarded the contract to Biskin, does that board have the autonomy, do they have the power to yank Biskin's license, to take their contract, their construction contractor away, and put us in total limbo?
No, I don't believe, I'm giving you my opinion, but I do not believe that while the construction of the project is going, that they have that authority. They have authority to punish us if they find out we're wrong, but not Rutherford County. And I checked with previous members of the board, and they have never heard of a situation where the board attempted to penalize an owner because it entered into a lawful contract with a contractor. And then, for some reason, at a later date, it was discovered that some error had been made, and they had never stopped construction of that project. And I don't believe can.
Other questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Again, I apologize for being a little...
No problem. I've got a question for Mr. Reed, I think. Jeff, had this whole dispute about the bids not arisen and the contracts had not been signed, we would still have been able to withdraw the bid, right? I mean, this, had we wanted to reverse an action before the contract's signed, we would be within our rights to do that, right?
Yeah, prior to awarding the contract to Biskin, yes.
Awarding or signing? Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm asking is, after the board took action saying, "We award this contract to Biskin," but before they're actually signed. That's the situation we're in now. Could we change our mind?
The board could, yes, until they execute the contract.
So the vote of the board does not have any genuine legal standing? It's an internal matter until the contract is signed?
Between you and Biskin, you're not, you don't have a contract with Biskin until the contract is signed with Biskin.
That's what I'm getting at.
I was wondering the same thing.
Other questions or discussion? Wayne?
I still have, Jeff, this is still, we're looking for your opinion. Now, still have a concern that, you know, say hypothetically, that Biskin's, you know, we stay with Biskin, and the licensing board does do something that impedes their ability to move on with the project. You know, I'm concerned about that. I know Mr. Smith has given us his opinion, but...
But before, Jeff, will we be within our rights to convene in Mr. Gill's boardroom for an attorney-client session?
I would probably discuss it out here at this point.
Okay. Answer of the day.
So, yeah, with respect to, you don't know what a board will do, the Board of Licensing Contractors. I think it would be extremely unlikely that the Board of Licensing Contractors would revoke the license of Biskin over an issue such as this. So I don't think that's likely. Or, you know, I cannot tell you the full range of disciplinary authority that the Board of Licensing Contractors has with respect to contractors, but it could range from anything, from fines to suspensions to revoking licenses. But revoking licenses are usually reserved for matters which involve, you know, things like fraud or pretty egregious matters. This is a matter where the full name of a sub, of a mason, was not listed, a masonry contractor was not listed on a bid envelope. And I would be surprised if that gave rise to any significant action from the Board of Licensing Contractors. But the board is a board of different individuals, and you don't know what that board will do until they meet as a collective body and vote to take action with regard to a specific issue. So it's hard to forecast with certainty what kind of action the board would or not, would not take. I did talk to the attorney for the Board of Licensing Contractors late today, and she said she did not know for sure what the board would do. She would not think that they would revoke the license or do anything that would interrupt the project. But of course, she's only a staff person there. She doesn't speak for the collective body, which is the board. So it's hard to know with foresight what would happen. It's hard to know with sore foresight what Hardaway Construction might, would do. You know, if they would do anything to challenge, if we would decide to go ahead and go with Biskin based on the opinion from the Board of Licensing Contractors. So you don't have a perfect resolution of the matter because you've got two contractors ultimately still competing for the same job. So long as that's happening, you know, one or the other can be disgruntled with your decision.
Right, some of us can be mad at this, no matter what we do, right? Aaron?
I just wanted to state, in case it heads in a direction to our vote or anything here in short order. At this point, I'm still, for a couple of reasons, I'm still comfortable with Mr. Gill's recommendation. And I'd just like to indicate to the other board members that I think the rebid is still the right path.
Okay. Tim?
I think that all of us are just interested in getting to a situation where we don't get caught up in the legalities of whatever can happen on any sides, to make sure that we get this building built. We need to get it built at the right price, for sure. But, you know, I think, Jeff, we're looking to you to give us what you think that the most likely scenario would be, that we would not get caught up in something that would keep us from getting the building built in timely fashion.
I think, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah. Well, if you stay with Biskin, the aggrieved party would be Hardaway in that case. So if anyone filed a complaint, probably would be Hardaway or the Board of Licensing Contractors if you stayed with Biskin. So if Hardaway filed suit, they would probably rely on the decision of the Board of Licensing Contractors, said the estate agency has determined that Biskin's bid was invalid. So you have that risk you run in that situation. The Board of Licensing Contractors, really, the only authority they would have with respect to the matter, if we decided to stay with Biskin, would be over Biskin itself, which would probably, would most likely involve some sort of, I would think, relatively minor sanction against Biskin that probably would not interfere with the project itself. If you rebid the project, in that case, you're acting in accordance with what the Board of Licensing Contractors has advised you to do or recommended to do, who has jurisdiction over contractors. And everyone's going to have its chance to rebid the project at that point. So those are the two sides of it. I wish I could tell you with a crystal ball which of the two sides would be better to go with, but it's hard.
But I think I heard you say that even though the board action is that the contract be awarded, it's very much like a real estate verbal, until the contract legally is signed, you really don't have a contract.
Well, we have not yet signed the contract with Biskin. So we do not have a legally binding contract with Biskin yet, because we've not yet executed it with Biskin.
Grant?
What would be the timetable if we were to go back through the bid process? How much total time?
Party could address that.
We would probably...
Three weeks?
Yeah, we'd probably offer immediate notification tomorrow. Micklin Garcia would have to, they'd have plans ready by August of '09, send back out. We'd probably, two weeks after that, on the 23rd, probably open the bids.
The next question would be, what would be our absolute deadline of awarding the contract in order to actually get the construction done, in order to open when we want to? So I mean, what would be the drop dead date, as best you could determine?
It will be the obligation of the contractor regardless of when it bids or anything else, to have it completed for school on August 13th.
You think physically it can be, it could be done, even if we had another three or four weeks or whatever?
We would probably, if we opened bids, just to say we opened them on the 23rd, we'd probably have a special call meeting the next day or within the next two days. I think that's a Tuesday. And hopefully, award the contract almost immediately, and then the following week, which would be right around the 1st September, start construction.
That's correct.
Other discussion? Terry?
I just got, sort of just thinking about this thing. I've got another question for Mr. Reed on this, the law, as far as the statute and everything. Have you, did they actually, I mean, we know the states said this, but have you looked, read the actual thing? I'm sure you have, in your opinion.
Well, the law does say, I mean, if you read the language of the statute, it says you have to use the full licensed name of the contractor. And that's what the statute says. I agree with Mr. Smith. That's probably not the intent of the law. It probably was not that technical or meant to be that strictly interpreted, because it was, I think, clearly adopted for, to prevent bid shopping between subs. But the statute does say you have to use the full licensed name of the contractor. So, and that's what whoever's filed complaint at the state or level has honed in on.
So if they'd had the right name and the wrong license number, they'd have got booted.
Yeah, I don't know if it says, I, what?
I mean, I'm just...
Yeah, I haven't looked at the statutes with respect to license. License numbers have to be accurately listed as well, so that probably would be a problem as well.
Go ahead.
Will any contractors be allowed to, any other companies be allowed to bid this time? Would be open completely?
Yeah. Well, the State Board of License Contract, to be clear, has says that JTK Masonry, which was the Mason subcontractor which Hardaway Construction had used, they said they should not be allowed to rebid as a subcontractor.
I understand that, but I'm talking about as far, even someone that's not showing any interest or not bid, we might have 10 bids, right?
If this rebid is open to anybody to bid?
Aaron?
Any further explanation as to why JTK has been excluded?
Their license had expired, so, and they had not submitted the required paperwork to renew their license with the state of Tennessee.
And is that still the case?
I don't, I've not checked it in the last week or two.
Okay, in that regard, though, if their license is in good standing, are they somehow penalized against this particular?
The Board of Licensing Contractors appears to have issued some kind of, a sort of disciplinary action against JTK Masonry for being, forbidding this job for Hardaway. So it appears, but if you look at the letter, the letter specifically says... So it appears, but if you look at the letter, the letter specifically, specifically says JTK Masonry should not be allowed to rebid the project as a subcontractor. And that appeared to be some sort of disciplinary action taken by the Board for Licensing Contractors.
Other discussion? Donald?
This is not a legal question. This is just a question, Mr. Clardy. The bid that Biskin gave was, what, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than the low bid?
Six hundred and fifty-three.
Six hundred and fifty-three thousand. Were the concessions made by Biskin to get it down, or was anything negotiated from that, or? Where do we stand with that?
We've targeted some areas and have been negotiating to get the price down so that we could possibly have enough money left over out of borrowing to do phase two of the evil bill.
Let me ask you this, then. If that's the case, if we rebid it, would those change orders be in the rebid to lower the total price of the project possibly?
They would, that would be reason that the plans would be reissued on the night so that we could clean them up and everyone would have a clean shot at, or get a clean set of plans to work off of, to know what to change.
Thank you.
Further discussion? I believe we have a motion on the table, so if somebody feels in the mood.
I'll move that we rebid the Stewart's Creek project.
So is that the proper terminology, Jeff? Do we need to?
Rescind and rebid.
Okay.
Yeah, if you're, if you're going to rebid it, you'd have to rescind your prior action.
It could, it'll be part of the same motion, though.
It can be part of the same.
So your intent is to rescind the awarding of the bid and rebid the project?
Yes, sir.
Second, Wayne seconded. Discussion on the motion. On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, motion's adopted. Any further business? Mr. Gill?
I'm sure, sure we'll go over all these names with a fun tooth comb, isn't it?
Make some contractors, well.
Yeah.
All right, word, Aaron.